If the speakers on the cannabis issue would like to come forward and sign in. Is that the process after? Who will call it to order and have you step forward, gentlemen?
Anybody that's going to be speaking tonight at the delegate table here. We have a sign-in sheet. We'd just like to print your name, and that's just so that when we do the minutes, we've got everybody's names spelled out.
Okay, a request from Councilor Thompson that we review the purposes of public hearing. Do you want to do that yourself?
Yes, I can read that.
Yes, please.
I've asked you to read this for the benefit of those who haven't attended the public hearing before. So, A, the purpose of this hearing is to consider certain bylaws which, if adopted, shall amend City of Grand Forks zoning law number 2039. All persons who believe that their interest in property within the boundaries of the city is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the bylaws that are the subject of this hearing. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views known. This hearing is open to the public, and all representations to council form part of the public record. A live video and audio feed may be broadcast and recorded by Grand Forks TV. All information, correspondence, petitions, or reports that have been received concerning the subject bylaws have been made available to the public. The correspondence and petitions received after January 30th, 2019, day of notification, are available for inspection during the course of this hearing and are located on the information table in the foyer of the council chamber. Members of the council may ask questions if they so wish. However, the main function of council members is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens or with each other at this hearing. Council debate on the proposed bylaws is scheduled to take place during the next regular meeting, council meeting, after the conclusion of this hearing. It should be noted, however, that for some items, a final decision may not be able to be reached at that meeting. It must be emphasized that council will not receive any representation from the applicant or members of the public after conclusion of this hearing. During a public hearing, some people sometimes become enthusiastic or emotional. Regardless of whether you favor or oppose any application or argument, please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion. Restrain enables others whose views may or may not coincide with your own to exercise their right to express their views and have them heard as an impartial forum as possible.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. And so we will start with zoning amendment by law 2039-3. And the gentleman that would like to speak to it, are you coming forward?
I was more here to view what was happening. No, I didn't know, no, nothing to speak of.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw amendments? Hearing none. Ask, do you have to ask three times? Is this like that?
Yes, you do.
And the second time, is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Is there a timeframe? Okay, we are obligated to wait 15 minutes, and I think that's a bit of a waste of time when we've got the other large issue in front of us here. I'm wondering if there's some freedom at this point for the next 15 minutes. If you change your mind, you can put your hand up, and we'll try and recognize you. But I think it would make sense to go on with number two, which is why the majority of the people are here tonight. Council comfortable with that approach?
Sure.
Break in the law. Okay. And so, we're now planning to introduce the item number A, which is the comprehensive development zone mobile home park by law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a application from a proponent to rezone our three lots into a single lot that are currently zoned single-family residential into a comprehensive development zone mobile home park. There is also a section of one of the parcels that's in the environmental development permit area, so we'd be looking at having that side, that piece of the parcel set aside as a nature preserve, basically. And it's been identifying our sensitive ecosystem inventory as being environmentally sensitive. As I could say, I'm going to open it up for questions.
Yes. Can we have some opening questions or comments from the public? Those people wishing to speak to this can come forward and sign in. Ken? Again, we've got the better part of an hour, but it would pay to be rather collected in your speech, and because there are a lot of speakers we could potentially have here.
And I'll try and keep my comments to the point, but I have basically a three-page that I plan to do a written submission, as you probably experienced this morning. This is literally hitting too close to home, and I may have to pass it off to somebody else to finish reading it for me in case I...
Can I do Dan and Mr. Harlow? Can we get him on mic there? I'm sorry.
My name's Dan Harlow. I've lived in Grand Forks since 1995. I moved here to finish my, continue and finish my career with the Forest Service. I'm a single parent of two children that are now grown, and now retired and 62 years old. I purchased my first home in Grand Forks on the corner on the four-way stop at 68th and Boundary Drive. And I lived there for several years. My father moved here in 1997 because he was dying. Thanks, I... I couldn't quite understand why, but he was doing it strictly to make my life easier as sole survivor and executor of the state. We purchased a house on 16th Street, the north end. We're on a nice quiet residential street, just past my house down in Spring Crescent. I've lived in that place for 20 years as of last summer. My dad passed away in 1998. My children have moved away as of 2004. And I've been basically rattling around in a big house for 14-plus years, and I've been trying to downsize. I've looked at numerous lots, plots, and my bucket list included building a house for myself. And whether that happens or not is a different story entirely. Last March, at the end of my street, last house on the street, the two-bedroom house came available, which was ideal for me. The lot was bigger than I planned, but that's okay. It's still in my neighborhood, which is an area I love. As I stated, I'm presently 62 years old. My family has a myriad of hereditary diseases that I may or may not get. I'm hoping to have another 10, 15, or 20 years or longer. But this house that I just bought, not even a year ago, was supposed to be my forever home. If I die, I want to die mowing my lawn in the backyard. Or if I become ill from these potential diseases that I may or may not get, and our health services here can no longer deal with me, then, and only then, was I ever planning to move away from Grand Forks, because I do love living here. If a mobile home park existed where the proposal is now, if it already existed, there's no way I would have bought the property that I now live on, because I don't want to live by high-density mobile home park. If there was even a proposal on the table last year at this time, when the house came available in March, again, unless it was rejected and not going through, again, I would not have bought my house. So now I'm in a predicament where I bought a place that I've spent premium dollar on, vacation, 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 as realtors would call it. And if this proposal goes ahead, I don't want to live there anymore. My house that I've moved from is only three doors to the south of where I am now, so do I move back to the house that I was trying to downsize from and lose the monies that I've been involved? I don't know. That's a tough decision, and that will have, you know, it'll be up to you guys to determine whether you pass this proposal or not. I'm opposed to the proposed mobile home park development. Some of the reasons, no, let me back up. I am not opposed to a new mobile home park in Grand Forks. That's not why I'm here. And I'm the first to admit this is NIMBY, not in my backyard, and it'll literally just be off the corner of my property. But I am opposed to this proposed mobile home park. Some of the reasons I'm opposed to these are as follows. The project is proposed on land presently zoned R1 residential, single or double family. I cannot see how this project will make my property more desirable or more valuable. I can only see taking away from the enjoyment of my property and most likely devaluing my property as well. Or as any adjoining property or properties potentially within that neighborhood, which will also affect my, potentially affect my original house that I just moved from. I've discussed this matter with my real estate agent, and he concurs with my thoughts that'll probably drive the price of my house down, my new house down, and possibly my old house, which is just down the street. I found the proposal package that I obtained off the City of Grand Forks website to be misleading and inconsistent, such as normal mapping protocols have not been followed. There is an environmentally sensitive wetland that requires an eventual, an environmental professional assessment to determine what steps the developer would have to take in order to protect the land. There is no indication that this assessment has been completed, and with there being greater than 30 centimeters of snow on the ground, I don't know how it's possible to complete such an assessment at this time of year. I found the proposal misleading in that it is promoting tiny homes on wheels, although tiny homes on wheels are in vogue, especially where land values have skyrocketed in the past few decades, particularly the lower mainland. And there are even television shows about them. The very fact that they have wheels makes them mobile homes. The developer, as far as I know, is a real estate land speculator of the Soyuz, who has apparently owned these subject lots for 10-plus years, and the lots have not sold. Why they've not sold, why they've not sold either before or after the developer purchased these lots isn't clear, other than there is no utility servicing these lots and possibly the proximity to the wetlands. A friend of mine has done some research on the developer, and apparently the, I haven't had time, I've been too busy. The developer's done similar projects in Golden Kamloops. I did not do the research, and I don't know if these other projects were the same size, bigger or smaller to the current proposal. The other projects were apparently, the other products were then sold off for profit to the speculator. The official community plan, the OCP, is a difficult document to read, but I was able to glean that one of the main objectives of the OCP is to increase the population density. However, I could not find any vision statements such as who are we trying to attract for our city, and what are they going to do for employment, because they do come here. I also saw something that I may or may not have misread, that I said, that said something to the effect that in order to promote a development, the city might pick up development costs like getting utilities, potable water, sewage, natural gas, and electricity to the lot lines. This could be a considerable expense that the city might pay. I'm no expert on the OCP, but that's sort of what I gleaned out of it, and I'm more than willing to be corrected if I'm wrong. I do not want to see our tax dollars lying in the pockets of a speculator who will sell the development and take those potential tax dollars out of Grand Forks as his profit with no further investment in our community. The city already has a mobile home park by law of 1977, which the developer is asking for considerable variance to this bylaw, citing that other jurisdictions require. A good proposal would be trying to meet existing bylaws within the city with no or minimal requests for any variance and without muddying in the water with what other places do. Boundary Drive narrows because of private land at the north end, which could present safety issues to the public and residents of this proposed mobile home park. The single-lane road often has cars parked on it in the summertime, or in the summer, so that people may access the walking trail along the old rail break, potentially creating further safety concerns. There are many unanswered questions about how the end product will turn out that are not provided in the proposal, like who is supposed to live there? Adult only, seniors, low income? Is it going to be owner-occupier for the mobile homes only, or can somebody put a mobile home in and then turn around and rent it out? Is there going to be an onsite manager? What are the rules going to be regarding pets? I don't know whether the developer can answer these questions, as he will not be running the mobile home park in the long run. He's building the development in order to flip it to a new owner for profit. We have no idea who will buy this development or the mobile home park, or the mobile home park will operate afterwards. I'm not opposed to a new mobile home park in Grand Forks. I admit that this is the case in NIMBY, not in my backyard situation for me. I do believe there are better-suited locations within the city limits or close to the city that would be better suited for such a development. Current zoning may require change at a different location, but could have little to no impact on existing neighborhoods or require the number of variants to an existing bylaw in order to make the work for the developer and work for the OCP without potentially costing tax dollars to facilitate. If this project is approved, I don't know what I'll do. I've already considered that I may have to move. Again, because I have no desire to live near a mobile home park. I don't want to move back to my old house, because I'm back to square one as far as downsizing. In the end, this might entail me leaving Grand Forks area completely, which I would really prefer not to do. I am against this proposed north Boundary Drive mobile home park. I urge Grand Forks City Council to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Nobody else is going to want to hear any of that. Okay, then, that's what we should do. In response? Not us. No, the developer has the opportunity at this point to respond to this presentation by Dan. Do you wish to do that?
Want me to do that now, or do I want to just...
Are there other...
Then do it at the end.
So maybe we'll have other speakers first? Okay. Mr. Harlow?
Although I made a presentation, will I have an opportunity to ask the developer questions?
I believe so. I mean, this is a meeting to get information, not for us to be questioning, so...
Again, I'm not familiar with procedures, so that may seem like a stupid question, but...
It would just be after everybody else has had an opportunity.
And then the developer could go back. Okay, that sounds like more orchestrated. All right, so for your comments.
Can I make my comments?
You definitely can.
I'm Jane Pring, and I live on Spring Crescent. I have, I have concerns about this trailer park because of the wetlands. For one thing, they get pretty rank in the summertime. People living in that trailer court would have to put up with it, because there's no way it can be changed. Last year was an exceptional year with flood, and there was water in that area that I had never seen before, and we moved here in 1992. And I've talked to other people in the area that have been there longer than I have, and they agreed. There's been several times in the spring when we've tried to access the walking grade that we haven't been able to, because that has been full of water. My other concerns are about the exceptions to the bylaw that's already in force for trailer courts. And I'm a firm believer that when you come into a town to build, you abide by the bylaws, and you don't ask for exceptions to the rule. I have no problems in this gentleman developing a trailer park and possibly selling it later on. It's a free enterprise system, and he has the right to do that. But I do think that we should take into consideration what is in that wetland and what is going to be disturbed by a trailer park going in there. We have pheasants. We have red-winged blackbirds. We have a pair of eagles. We have a pair of osprey. We have hawks. What is it going to do to them? We're supposed to be lessening our carbon imprint, and I kind of think that's not exactly the way to do it. And one of the other items on here in the presentation that the city has states that it's to attract people to Grand Forks. I think we have other areas that would prove to be more attractive to people coming to Grand Forks than living in a home next to a swamp. And I'm sorry, it is a wetland, but it's also called a swamp. And that's basically my opposition to it, as well as I've talked with a real estate agent as well, and he said it would bring our property values back. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And someone else?
Thank you, Jane. Further speakers? Everybody signing in there?
My name is Andy Shalitou, and I live on Spring Crescent. I have a problem. We have three lots, they're three building lots. How can you go out and justify overnight to put eight times the amount of lots on that small piece of property? Eight times! As far as I'm concerned, this could create a ghetto. Another thing, I, the road shown is not a road, it's a lane. Probably going to be 12 feet wide, and that, and that one's going to be a one-way street with all the traffic in there. That doesn't make any sense to me. And there's a lot of other things, but they're small, that are not part of the valley, got to have to change all kinds of things. The road to, or go straight through is too narrow. The part of the property, it should be illegal, like if it's 60 feet wide, it should be right up to the end, and it's not. And so, but what happens, somebody owns part of that property, so the, it should be purchased by the city or should be purchased by the subcontractor, or I mean, the developer. And there was that big tree that's going to have to be cut down. Who's going to pay for that? The city or him? So that there's enough road to go through. And the other thing is that he wants to put in a four-foot chain link. This could be legal, but it does not conform to the, like a triangle garden. They all have a six-foot fence. Why shouldn't he put a nice six-foot fence made out of plastic, and they're going to last forever? You know what I mean? And so, because if he put in, everybody, if he put in a wooden fence, then in 10 years, it's down, it's going to have to be rebuilt. And so, and they're all going to look so differently, and they're not going to be many thanks by most of these people, because they're going to be people that are poor and so on. And I just wondered how they're going to get the water and sewer in there. Are they going to have, who's going to pay for the fire hydrant that will have to be added in there? Yeah? And who's going to have to pay for the power lines that are going to be put in, because there's nothing left there now? Anyway, I'm opposing that the high density is going to be a ghetto. That's what is going to come out in the time. Eight times, imagine! It's illogical. The lots are so small, they don't have time to breathe. And you know, people's going to sniff, and you're going to hear, the neighbor's going to hear you. You know what I mean? And there's no breathing space, you know? It's going to create havoc for the line enforcement, and it's going to bring in a lot of people in there. I just, I just don't see anything positive in it. Thank you for your time and listen.
Thank you, Ann. We're open to other speakers.
Yeah? My name's Ken Fincham, and I live on...
Lansdowne.
Sorry. I live on Lansdowne Crescent, which is just off the other end of Spring. Everything that's been said so far this evening are my feelings exactly. I'm dragging this thing around a little, my paper's sitting on the counter at home. But I do fact that these people are saying I'm not in favor of this at all. My wife as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Yeah.
I'm Michael Anderson. I have the property just east of this development going on, and my family has had that property for, oh God, since probably 1935, eh? And I, it has a designation, and I wish to would stay that designation, because I think the neighborhood that we live in is dense enough as it is, and 25 units would just make it a completely different neighborhood. Of all the neighbors I've talked to anywhere are totally opposed to this development. By this person that doesn't live in Grand Forks, probably won't live in Grand Forks, but will develop that property just to make money. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Further comments? All right, can we hear from the developer? All right, uh, can we hear from the developer? Adam, I'm sorry, your last name is?
Kovačić.
Kovačić.
I'll, uh, respond to...
It's on, it's on.
Uh, you're on.
I'm on. Um, I'd like to respond to the speakers in order. Speaker number one, um, a couple of significant errors in the presentation. There is no plan to have tiny homes on wheels in this project. Uh, the, um, there are small homes and that was one of the key objectives of the development was to create homes that were at an affordable price level and, um, uh, are not currently available in the Grand Forks marketplace. But these would be homes that are set on permanent foundations, uh, whether they're, um, a block foundation or a port foundation, uh, it'll depend on the individual. Uh, the, um, the small homes will range typically in the five hundred to eight hundred square foot range. And generally they'd be a fourteen-foot wide manufactured home that's anywhere from, um, up to about fifty, fifty-five feet in length. So the tiny home, which is the equi, is being suggested, it's an RV, was never part of the proposal and I'm not sure where that information came from. Because in any presentation I've made to...
I can't hear you. Can you speak into the mountain base?
Any presentation that I've, um, made to city staff or any meetings that I've had with city staff, tiny homes on wheels were never part of what was proposed for the project. The, uh, the second, um, piece of misinformation from the first speaker is a reference to two projects that I was involved in, Golden and Kamloops, which were, I'm not sure to what level of development they were taken and then flipped. Um, I've never been involved with the project in Golden or in Kamloops. I've done a number of projects in other parts of the province. I've done a couple of recent projects in Asuys, which were fully developed. And they were sold off as individual units because one was a subdivision, the other one was a townhouse development. So obviously they were built to sell, but they were not rezoned and then flipped as a piece of land and then I moved on, so. So that's a significant piece of misinformation. I, again, I don't know where it's coming from, but whoever informed the first speaker about these, uh, two projects in Golden and Kamloops was wrong. Um, the third item, again, is, uh, it's just getting the property zoned to flip. My track record doesn't suggest that. Again, I refer you to two recent projects in Asuys, which in both cases had to be zoned and neither one was flipped. Uh, speaker number two, reference to the wetland smelling. Um, I've owned the property since two thousand and six and I've been on the site many times, including in the summer. I was on the property during the course of the flooding in Grand Forks this past spring. I don't know where the smelling issue is coming from. I certainly didn't notice it, maybe, maybe my nose isn't as good, but, um, I don't think the smell is going to be a component of any development that would take place on that property. The, um, speaker, the second speaker also mentioned, don't ask for bylaw changes. The, um, mobile home park bylaw in Grand Forks is over forty years old. The mobile home park industry has changed in that timeframe dramatically. Homes are built in a completely different manner than they were forty years ago. Um, they, um, they can be placed in a much tighter density than they were before just because they don't burn the way that, um, a forty-year-old mobile home might have burned, uh, that was built in the sixties or seventies. And the, um, if you can't change the bylaws, you don't get the project done. If, if it doesn't work within the parameters of what is currently available, um, a bylaw change is part of the development process. If, um, if changes have to be made, um, you make the request and you go through the process that we're doing right now. If council feels that it's a viable project and it's a benefit to the community, they go ahead with the change. If not, it's not done. But to say that you have to come into a community and just work within the bylaws that are there may work, but often it doesn't. And that's the purpose of a rezoning process and that's why we have situations like this where we have public hearings and council has an opportunity to hear everybody speak and we move forward. Uh, speaker number three. Concern was mentioned about density. How do we go from, um, three residential or three large lots to twenty-five lots? The, um, three lots that are there are one-acre lots, um, are more density than, um, than, um, is, um, uh, required for most people's single-family home purposes. So, again, I looked at what are the needs of the community? And one of the key things that, um, I recognized was there's no affordable housing in Grand Forks. If, um, if we look at what the, um, the real estate market has done here over the last, um, two, three years, at the present time, um, you'd be hard-pressed to find very many listings under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what is available under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is primarily older mobile homes. Uh, the last, uh, research that I did, um, showed that, um, of the, um, homes that are currently on the market, uh, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less, which is kind of the target, the maximum target number that I have in mind for this particular property as far as individual homes. And most of them are going to be closer to a hundred thousand or less. Uh, but there's six homes on the market today in Grand Forks at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. Two are mobile homes, two are condominiums and two are fifty-year-old mobile homes under the law. That doesn't give a person that, um, is either starting out or in a lower income level much of an opportunity to get into the housing market. And, um, by creating lots that can accommodate homes in the five hundred to eight hundred square foot range, we can offer homes that are quite yourself or in some cases well under a hundred thousand dollars. And that's providing an opportunity either to a first-time buyer or somebody that wants to downsize. Just like the first speaker mentioned, he wanted to downsize. Um, that's an opportunity that doesn't exist today in the Grand Forks marketplace. And just, just to further elaborate on the three lots and how you can go to, um, to a density of twenty-five lots, just two of those lots under the current zoning could accommodate ten single-family or duplex lots. So if they end up being ten duplex lots, there's twenty residences on just two of the lots. And that's under the current zoning, that's without a zoning change, under the R1 zoning. And I've done, um, I've done a study on, um, whether or not a development like that was viable. Um, and that's what we came up with. We came up with a design that allowed for ten lots, whether they be single-family or duplex lots. So the density really is available there with the current zoning. It doesn't have to entail a zoning change to go from, like the, um, third speaker said, from three lots all of a sudden to twenty-five. I can take two lots and create twenty residences on them under the existing zoning.
Could I ask a question? What, what size of yard would be available for each unit?
It'll vary. Uh, there's, there's two, uh, proposed sizes for the development. There's thirty-five hundred square feet for the full-size homes, which are going to be typically sixteen-foot homes by up to seventy-five feet. And it can also be double-wide homes anywhere from twenty-four to thirty feet in width. So those will be thirty-five hundred square feet, roughly thirty-seven, thirty-nine feet in width by about a hundred feet in length. So that's, that's the larger homes. The smaller homes...
What kind of yard, like, just as a yard, not...
Well, it'll depend, it's hard to say what the yard will be. There is going to be, uh, obviously some perimeter setbacks around the home. Um, and there's going to be a setback at the front, there'll be a setback at the rear. But it'll depend if somebody's putting in a eight-hundred square foot home, they're going to have a lot more yards. So you'll have, you know, if you take, um, say a twenty-five hundred square foot lot and take off eight hundred feet, you've got sixteen hundred square feet of yard.
So that, so you're thinking of variety of sizes?
Well, uh, in a, in a market such as Grand Forks, you have to be flexible and offer a variety of sizes because there'll be people at different income levels, at different stages of their lives, um, different expectations, different budgets. So the whole purpose here was to provide as broad a spectrum as possible. So basically what, um, what I've, uh, tried to accomplish is to offer homes as small as five hundred square feet, which is going to be a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, fourteen by about forty square foot home. Um, up to as big a double-wide as you want and probably the maximum would be about eighteen hundred square feet, which is, I expect is probably way larger than what the majority of people that would want to live in the, in the park would be looking for. I think what realistically we'll probably be looking at is a range of about seven hundred to a hundred square feet for homes. That's kind of what I expect will be the market. So I'm trying to get the chair. Let me hear.
Mr. Harlow?
Point of order, sir. Um, you said earlier that we do our presentations and questions would be afterwards. So could we just carry on with Mr. Kovačić's presentation and then follow it up with questions afterwards?
I, I believe he is walking through some of the points he wanted to make. When he's finished that, I would expect that we could remain and bring forward more questions.
Um, speaker number three mentioned a concern about a chain link fence and then he also mentioned a wood fence. Uh, I'm not sure I fully understood that. Uh, the wood fence, there's never a wood fence component to, um, to any of the fencing that was going to be around the perimeter of the property. The, uh, the reason for, um, suggesting chain link is because it's basically a forever fence. Um, if it's powder coated, you can have a black color, you can have a brown color. You can have privacy strips that are inserted between the links. So you've got, you've got quite an attractive fence and a fence that doesn't require any maintenance. Um, and it's certainly going to outlast any, uh, wood fence that, uh, might have been put up around the property. And there was never any intention, uh, and I don't believe I mentioned in any of the discussions that I've had with city staff of the interest in putting in a wood fence. Uh, another comment that, um, the speaker, a number, uh, the third speaker made was most residents will be poor. That's a very, uh, that's, that's a complete misconception on what a larger or a manufactured home park is all about. There's a lot of people that, um, are quite attracted to a mobile home park, primarily people that are downsizing, somebody that, um, they have, um, one or two people in the household. They want to travel, um, they're, um, they're not tied to, um, the community with a job for twelve months a year. I have been involved with mobile home parks for about twenty years and there's a lot of mobile home parks in the province that are highly desirable. Um, they're, um, they're very attractive in the way they're designed and landscaped. A lot of owners take pride in ownership in their homes and have beautifully done yards. In a, a new park, you're not going to run into a slump just because people that invest seventy-five thousand, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in a home are not going to let a thing start to deteriorate and run down and you're not going to end up with basically a bunch of derelict homes in the park. They're going to end up with an attractive product just because of the investment that, uh, that a new resident has made. And, um, they're going to be interested in presenting the value of their investment. So I think it's a fallacy to suggest that people that live in mobile home parks, and I mean, there are mobile home parks that are older where, um, you have a lower level of income and, um, you know, maybe not the most desirable tenant group. But in a new park, it's a very, very unlikely situation to develop. It, uh, it's going to be basically a self-qualifying environment. Once you've spent X number of dollars, you're going to want to protect your, your investment. Um, there was also a, a comment made by speaker number three regarding services and who will pay. Um, typically when you're doing a development, uh, the developer is the one that pays for any services in the ground. If, um, a water line or a sewer line has to be brought to the property, that's a development expense. Uh, there was a mention that the hydro is derelict, yes, I agree. I think the power pole that's close to the property is, is rotten and it's going to be gone. But, um, again, that's not an expense that the city typically incurs in any kind of a development project because that's part of the, um, of the cost of doing a development. And, um, any upgrading of services, that's the developer's responsibility. Speaker number four, um, I believe you're the gentleman, speaker number four. You didn't really make a comment, so I've got nothing to, um, to respond to.
All my paperwork's in the test room.
But speaker number five, who's the gentleman that owns the property across from, um, the proposed development. Um, I guess, um, the one comment, um, is projects are developed to make money. Well, if they, if they don't make money, they don't go forward. That's, you know, that's the bottom line. And, um, um, I bought the property, um, twelve years ago or thirteen years ago with the expectation that it would eventually be developed. And I've looked at the market in Grand Forks for years and years. And Grand Forks is a very, very difficult market to make numbers work. Development costs here are very high and real estate values relative to, um, communities in the Okanagan or, uh, in the West Cootenays like Cassavara and Nelson are still relatively low. So to make the numbers work, um, you have to look at options that potentially involve more density. And this is one of the reasons why, um, I felt that, um, a manufactured home park would be a good fit for that property. And again, if numbers don't work, the project doesn't happen. And that's, that doesn't matter whether it's Grand Forks or Asuys or Fentick and it's the same everywhere. So the objective of this development is to offer a broad spectrum of housing opportunities. And, um, uh, the, um, that's why I asked city staff to look at considering, um, two sizes of home sites, ones for five hundred, eight hundred square foot homes and then the ones for what we would call kind of the regular manufactured home, which would be the sixteen by seventy-five or by twenty-four by fifty double-wide. Um, and the thinking behind that was there's going to be a full spectrum of people in the community, some with lots of money, others with less money and different needs as far as, um, whether or not they need a lot of square footage or are just a place to hang their hat while they travel for six months of the year. So the, um, the, the project attempted to present a product that would appeal to a wide cross-section of the market.
Sir, I, I'm looking at the time thinking that we should open this up for further questions if you're comfortable.
Yep, done.
And can we raise your hand, uh, Mr. Harlow first?
Well, I've been following your notes, Mr. Kovačić, or making notes of you, you've made your presentation. And Kevin has a map on the, uh, screen right now.
Yep.
I'm disappointed, having been in the Forest Service for over thirty years, that this map wasn't, simply, north is north. Every map has a different north, but that's a minor detail. I'm colorblind, so I have an issue with the, you know, I'm sure there's red on there, but I have a difficult time. And I can't, can you turn that sideways, Kevin, ninety degrees so that that thing about the red outline?
And, no, no, just put it out, I'll just come closer so I can read it because I can't read it back here.
It says, "Red outline denotes spaces for tiny homes."
Yep.
Now, I'm sorry if I confuse the jargon these days because there's lots of jargon involved with tiny homes, tiny houses.
Yep.
And if that's a misnomer, I apologize for that mistake. And regarding the research about your other developments that I was told about in Golden and Kamloops, again, I didn't have time to do the research. It was my former boss at the Forest Service, who's now retired also, who took... It was my former boss at the Forest Service, who's now retired also, who took it upon himself to tell me that you'd done these projects. And I apologize if that information is incorrect, but that's what I was told, so that's what I went with. Getting to the issue that speaker number two, Jamie brought up about the smell, that's not an every-year occurrence. In fact, not this past year, the year before was a, quite a stench-y year. I could smell it downtown and as I would walk home from downtown, it'd get stronger. There's only one place it's coming from and that's the Oxbow or the Wetlands. The mobile home park bylaw of 1977, yes, it is old, but it has been amended through bold print, if you read through it, and subject, uh, bylaw changes in the sideline. And it currently states that, uh, the entire perimeter of the mobile home park will be, uh, surrounded by a tight board fence or a vegetated screen to a maximum height of 1.8 meters. There is no allowance in there for chain link or a combination thereof, which is one of the amendments you're at, or variants that you're asking for. Uh, presently, under the R1 rating for the lea- the three lots, it allows for one home or a duplex. So I'm not sure where you're coming up with 20, like, you're the expert on this, you're the developer, I'm only going with what I understand of R1 zoning. In my canvassing of my neighbors, who are all here in support and in opposition to your development, um, I heard about a cul-de-sac proposal some years back, which I don't know if that ever made it to city council for approval or not. Uh, I would be far less objectionable to a cul-de-sac situation with nine residential homes being constructed. The package that I read online initially made no indication about permanent foundations that would be considered a modular home. I see nothing on the concept draw that's on the map right now indicating the double-wides that you're alluding to. I only see that there's basically standard mobile homes that, which I guess nowadays is 16-foot wide. Uh, in my days, I spent 12 years in mobile homes and of course it was going from 12 to 14 and 16 was on the horizon at that point and of course I've not been in mobile homes since. Um, the possibility, like, I've used StatCan information that, uh, the average family size in British Columbia is 2.3 people. Well, there's no such thing as a .3 of a people except to call it a child select round-up, so that's three. There's no guarantee that any family is going to be two, one, I'm, I'm by myself. One, two, three, five, seven. I can't predict that. That's only the statistical information that's available through Stat Canada for British Columbia. Um, as I said, this, the double-wide, uh, double-wides were never mentioned in your proposal. Tiny homes are ti- that, I may have misinterpreted that, but I read that as tiny houses on wheels. Um, as, as I alluded to earlier, there is in the, um, present bylaw, tight board fence. So yeah, there is a possibility of a wooden fence.
Or plastic.
Well, no, I'm not going there, Andy. Uh, it's just that it's talking tight board. I don't care what, whether it's wood board or plastic board, but it's a privacy fence. And I understand that chain link with slats in it and stuff like that. Four feet, I feel, is a totally inadequate height for that area because it's a wildlife corridor for deer. And essentially that fence doesn't exist to deer. If it's a solid fence, deer don't jump over because they can't see where they're landing. If it's a, a tall fence, I have a, I, my yard is deer fence. I don't like the deer coming in my yard. So it's highly unlikely they're going to jump 7.6 or 7 and 1/2 feet. That's why it's called deer fence. I think it's ugly, but I don't think it's near as ugly what chain link potentially can be if it winds up looking like a prison. I understand powder coating and the slippery slats, but that go in between to add privacy. But this was never part of your, uh, presentation, your original package presentation that I picked up late on the fact. And, uh, again, the, the Schedule A4 site plan, I see nothing on there that indicates a double-wide home. I see nothing on there that indicates the utility building that, again, the mobile home park, uh, bylaw of 1977 requires, depending on the number one. I don't know what the parking facilities are going to be for each place. The present bylaw says, I believe, for every four spaces, four, four bays, that you have to provide visitor parking. I don't know how that's going to work into this. Uh, there's so many questions in the long run and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure, Mr. Kobusu, that you're not going to stay here and run this thing. You're going to sell it for profit. I understand free market and that's what you're here to do is make some money. But at the end of the day, you're not going to be making the rules of the day-to-day operations. We have no idea if there's going to be a manager on site to deal with the day-to-day operations and potential violations of the mobile home park, uh, rules that undoubtedly will be set in place. So is that going to be left to the RCMP, our bylaw officer, or building inspector? I don't know. That question hasn't been answered.
Dan, I, I-
I'm sorry, I know you're running into time.
We've got six minutes and I'd like to add to give the developer a chance to respond to what you're saying, so.
Yes. Well, there's a whole bunch of, again, misinformation. First of all, um, the most recent item that you mentioned about rules. The rules are part of the assessment that a potential resident in the park wants to know and wants to look at before they consider moving into the park.
Absolutely.
And the reason for that is they want to know if their pets are allowed, they want to know if rentals are allowed, they want to know if children are allowed.
Right.
They want to know if the car that they put in their carport has to be licensed or not licensed. So to say that I'm not going to be involved with the rules, well, if I'm going to develop the park, I have to set the rules. So, you know-
I understand that, sir, but, but you're going to sell it and those rules may change at that point.
The rules could very well change.
That's right.
But the rules, there have, there will be rules because you don't just invite people to move in. They won't move in anyway. They won't, they don't want to know what the parameters are.
Of course.
So if somebody has, you know, three pit bulls, um, and the neighbor has, um, a little Yorkie, um, they'll want to know, um, whether or not that dog is going to be-
These are the questions, they're not part of your package at this time.
Well, you can't, you don't include everything in the package.
I understand, but, but there's a lot of questions outside of that. I'm sorry, carry on, I'm interrupting.
Deer fence, you say you don't want it to look like a fort. Well, deer fences are usually eight or 10 feet high.
One, seven and a half feet.
Um, so, um, the, um, I don't think that having a fort, like that development in Greenwood, it's called Fort Greenwood, will be very appealing on a property like that or any property in Grand Forks because it looks-
But it's not a mobile home park, it's an RV park.
Oh, it doesn't matter, sorry.
I'm cautioning here, this is not a debate, we're going to ask for a good idea.
So anyway, uh, I think, um, you know, the, um, the, the, the tight board fence, again, that's a wood fence, it's going to rot, it's going to require more maintenance. Chain link fences, they don't require maintenance, they look good, they last for a long time. Plastic fences look good until a snowplow hits one of those and then, um, then what happens with the, uh, the plastic slats that are in the plastic fence? They're, you know, they're attractive, but they're not very durable. And, um, um, visitor parking, that's part of the, uh, the, uh, the bylaw, uh, the, the way that park is laid out, every one of those homes has space for a carport. And in addition to the carport, uh, there's one other space on the, um, on the property to accommodate, I'm sorry, the park seat that I'm not, but that's okay, carry on. Again, if you look at that, um, layout closer, there is, um, I think there's at least, I can see at least one double-wide on there and it might actually be true enough. But I didn't specify the number of double-wides because until the individual resident selects a home that they want to buy and own, I can't, I'd be guessing at the number of double-wides. The lots that are designed to accommodate the bigger homes can accommodate double-wides. Well, if somebody wants to put a 30-foot by 50-foot double-wide on there, they're able to do that. Um, if they want to have a 16 by 75-foot single-wide, they're able to do that as well. And as far as I know, you mentioned one other, um, thing about, uh, mobile homes, there are no 12-foot, uh, mobile homes that-
No, no, that's old, I know that.
They don't exist anymore.
That's where, that's just my history. I know 12, 14s were available and 16s were on the way when I actually bought those.
And under, and one more, just one more point. Under the R1 zoning bylaw, uh, the minimum parcel size with, um, city water and sewer is 7,500 square feet, so a one-acre lot can be divided down into 7,500 square feet.
Okay, I understand now. I, I was just thinking the one-acre lot as a sit.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to have to wrap this up and I do need to ask if, now that we've passed, the time is, were there any comments further on the cannabis bylaw? Seeing none, I'd like to thank everybody for your input this evening and thank you very much to the developer for answering questions. I hope this has been useful and, and council will consider it. Thank you very much. Adieu.